Councilmember Mario Buchanan Jr.
Present.
Councilmember Africa Luna Carrasco.
Present.
Councilmember Jose Ponce.
Present.
Councilmember Matias Rosales.
Present.
Councilmember Gloria Torres.
Present.
Vice Mayor Maria Cecilia Cruz.
Present.
Mayor Gerardo Sanchez.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone, and gracias por venir. Thank you for coming. We're going to go ahead and go with our first item, which is item 2A, Discussion and Possible Directions Staff in All Matters Regarding Rancho Los Orros Roadway Improvement, CDVG Contract Number 113-20, Change Order Number 1. Jenny Torres, Economic Development Manager. Or Mr. Locchio.
Good evening, Mayor members of the council. The staff has been working with C-Mix Construction in the Rancho Los Orros project. It is a CDVG-funded project, but we also have a match from Public Works Funds. We did receive a request for a change order to make some modifications that included some asphalt removal and replacement, and a sewer main removal and replacement for about $18,220. As part of that change order as well, the contractor requested an additional amount of $38,969.51 due to the coronavirus. What their situation is, is originally when they bid out the project, they expected that many of the residents were going to be working, or the kids were going to be at school. So usually, they go in, they're able to do a lot of the work while the residents are out. But now, because we had the stay-at-home order, and they were going to be present, they were looking at potentially shutting down the water and the sewer services for 15 homes for about a week and a half, for about six to eight hours a week. So what we did is, we negotiated with them to try to minimize the impact to the residents. What we did is requested, obviously, some extensions on the timeframe, so they'll be doing the work a little bit slower, but still within the timeframe that the CDVG requires, so that we do not, we do not go over the timelines that they have suggested, thereby it doesn't affect us in the future. But they also were going to try to get some portable potties with, portable potties with the wash basins for the residents, so that they can use them individually for their homes. They were going to be able to get phone numbers from the residents and call them instead of knocking on the door and getting close to them. So we were able to negotiate that, but it was going to, it's going to cost us about $38,000 to do that. We had several meetings with our engineers, the contractor, the subcontractor, and our public works staff. We figured out that this was the best way to have less impact on the residents. Well, Locchio is here with me. He was kind enough to come in and help me with this item, in case there's any specific questions. We are going to try to request the reimbursements from these funds from the AC, AC, what is it called? AC meet? The, for the FEMA funds. We're going to try to request that, we're going to try to request that funding back. It might be approved, it might not be approved, but right now, we're taking it out of the sewer bond. Locchio is here, in case you have any specific questions into the details of the construction. He's been part of all the meetings with the contractors. Do you have any questions, Mayor, members of the council?
Yes, I have a question for you, Locchio. Locchio, could you explain the whole situation of the bathroom, the situation, the portable potties?
Okay. So, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. So, pretty much, the contractor, the change order was based on, it was going to be a higher risk for his staff, because the approach to doing the work was going to be different. First, you know, they can't have the one-on-one contact like they normally do, going knocking on doors, saying, you know, don't flush in the next hour. So there's a lot more coordination that they wouldn't be able to do. So they had to do, set up pumping differently than what anticipated. So for that, what was planned is, they were going to do one house at a time, and for us to not limit the household in the ability to wash their hands, go to the restroom, and things like that, because we're working on their sewer line, we provided, or we proposed, and we did provide a portable potty. That way, somebody had to wash their hands, or they have to go to the restroom, they can use that portable potty versus the city saying, no, you know what, we're going to shut off your water for two, or four, or six hours, because we have to work on your sewer service, especially when the indications or recommendations are to, for people to wash, wash their hands. So that was really the, the solution that we came up with, provide a portable potty, where they could, with a wash station for each house while we work, or while the contractor works on their sewer service. Oh, yes. Originally, the contractor was proposing to have a water outage for, for the block that they were working, which, you know, with, with the current situation, that was something that the city didn't want to allow for the contractor to be, to leave the residents without water. So that was another motive, you know, to have the portable potties. That way, we can reduce the water outage at each residence, one at a time, and for a lot shorter duration.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Locchio. No, no, because have we, have, did we ask comments from the, from the residents locally? Are they aware? Are they going to be aware?
Yeah, yeah. Part of the, or part of the contract, or part of the work that is under contract with the contractor, is they have to provide notices to each resident, as well as, they, they go a little bit beyond the area as well, informing people of the work that's being done. So each resident is informed of the impact that they're going to be seeing, and then they're going to be, like, they will get the portable potty, so they can use it while their service, sewer service is not to be used. So yes, the contractor has contact with every, every single homeowner that's going to be impacted.
Okay. Thank you, Locchio. I'm going to go ahead and open the floor to council members, if you have any questions or concerns. Vice Mayor, do you have any questions or concerns?
No, Mayor, no questions.
Thank you. Matias Rosales, council member, any questions or concerns?
No, sir.
Council, council member Gloria Torres, any questions or concerns?
No, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Mario Buchanan Jr., any questions or concerns?
No, Mayor, no questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Africa Luna Carrasco, any questions or concerns?
No, Mayor. Everything was pretty much addressed. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Jose Ponce, any questions or concerns?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Obviously, this is, this is a major project, and requires a lot of, a lot of, basically, we need to be very sure that our residents are aware of the things that are going to happen. So, please, it's very important. I know, whenever you shut up water, whenever, there's always complaints. We want to make sure we address those complaints, we expedite those, and make sure we answer anything, any, anything concerned they might have, okay? So, thank you, Jenny. Thank you, Locchio. Always, always impressed with your hard work. Gracias. Thank you. Proceed.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to go ahead now with item number 2B, Continuation of Discussion, Review, and Possible Directing Directions to Staff in All Matters Regarding the Proposed City San Luis Fiscal Year 2020, I mean, 2020, 2021 Budget. Who's going to direct this? Is this, are you going to direct this?
Yes. Francis is going to start off, and then I'll go down the list.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Vice Mayor, and the agency is online. We will be going through the 2020, 2021 Budget by agency.
Okay.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. This is Tadeo de la Olla. We have some, if not all, of the representatives of the organizations that receive civic contributions. It is my understanding that all of you have a list before you, that will be go over.
Let me, let me, let me check, let me check here. I do have some, but I believe I have it through email. Let me, let me check that. Does everyone have a list? Does everyone have a list? Yeah. Did we print out, did we print out lists for everyone, just in case?
No, we don't.
I have it. I received it via email.
Okay.
And it should be also on the screen.
So, the 2020, 2021 proposed dues are going to be pulled up on the screen by the clerks, and then we have, each of you should have received by email, the capital project list, as well as the positions.
Okay. Very good.
Okay. So, first, we have Ramirez Advisors. I believe Mr. Ramirez is on the line. Last year, we allocated $50,000. This year, he's requesting a $5,000 increase for a, for a total of $55,000 to be paid in a 12 equally monthly payments.
Very good.
What do we, what do we get that list?
That's on the agenda.
Yes, I do. That list, did we get it today?
The, the amounts are on the agenda. The list should be in your email, right, Francia?
Okay.
Francia, when did you send that email? So, so everyone can know.
The budget spreadsheet was not sent by email. It was attached on the agenda.
Okay.
But I'll be, I'll be printing out the spreadsheet for Councilmember Torres, so she can have it in paper. We'll take it to her right now.
Okay, thank you. Well, okay, let's go with the first item, was, was Luis Ramirez and his services is providing the city. All I could say is that Luis Ramirez and his group were extremely important in, in trying to get, and actually, actually made, in my opinion, together with council and their, their help, we were able to guarantee the funding for the, for the restructuring or re-modification of Port of Entry 1. It is something that, it is the only port that's going to be, that was on the budget. It was the only port that was approved. That's big. I don't know if you remember, about a year and a half ago, about, about a year ago, we were denied, we were number three, and we disappeared a day or two before they were going to actually pass the budget. This year, when, when we came up, the San Luis Port of Entry 1, all the entities, including the governor, including the Arizona delegation, including every entity here in Yuma County, to include the city of Yuma, Somerton, Wilton, we all got together, and we needed the guidance, and we needed the help, like always. Luis Ramirez and his group have always provided that. Now, just because they got funded, doesn't mean the work is done. It means we're going to have to work a lot more, especially after the whole COVID situation, it's what we're going through. We're going to have to, probably, once the, the ban on travel is up, we're, we are going to be doing some traveling, especially most likely to Mexico City, especially to DC. And so, the work is not done. I think it's going to be harder now, because with all the COVID, everything got delayed. We want to make sure, we want to make sure that, that funding remains. We don't want to lose that kind of funding. So, it's, the city has already done its part. We, we basically, Friendship Park, what we did last time, we basically gave it back to the feds. That in itself will facilitate the, the essential improvements that need to happen in Port of Entry 1. I would like to emphasize what is happening now with our Port of Entry, which is, we are processing more vehicles, we are processing more pedestrians than, than any port here, here in Arizona. So while everyone's number is going down, our numbers keep going up. So it is absolutely essential, important we keep Luis Ramirez and his associates. Now, they have worked, and the thing is, and trust me, we get updates on a daily basis, because that's, that's something I requested from him. So, it is something that needs to happen. The work is not done. We do not want to lose any kind of funding. If anything, we're still shy closer to $89 million to finish the project. So we have, there's a bunch of work ahead. Luis and his group are aware of that, and I'm pretty sure council is also aware of that, so I have no problem with the 55. I will now open the floor to, to the Vice Mayor. Any questions, concerns, comments?
A comment, Mayor. Thank you, Luis, and to your team. You guys did an excellent job, and I know the requesting of the $5,000 is very well deserved. Your team and yourself did an excellent job, and we are going to continue to work hard for, not just Port of Entry 1, but also continue to work for Port of Entry 2, which is very important. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Matias.
Thank you, Mayor. No, I totally agree with you and Vice Mayor Ramos. It's an important part of our, of our group, to do what we need to do for our Port of Enters and for our community. So I have no issues with the extra $5,000 for the year, and again, thank you to Ramirez and his staff, and hopefully this year, we get the second part done, like Mr. Ramos mentioned.
Yes, we will, we will. Councilmember Torres, any questions or concerns?
No, is the same amount of the last year?
Last year was $50,000. This year is $5,000 more.
Okay.
Thank you, Gloria.
That's better.
Perfect. Councilmember Buchanan, questions or concerns?
No, Mayor, no questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Africa Luna Carrasco, questions or concerns?
No, Mayor, no questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Jose Ponce, questions or concerns?
No, Mayor, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Well, that appears to be the, a go on that one, okay? Tadeo?
Okay, noted.
Thank you. Now, we have the Greater Yuma Economic Development Corporation. Last year's budget approved was $51,254. They've requested an increase of $6,254. And so, who's going to talk about this one?
There is a per capita request increase.
Uh huh.
Hold on a minute, if I can go back to the agenda. Julie, you're there, right?
Mayor, I have a question. Councilmember Buchanan.
See, go ahead, Mario.
Where, where is the Greater Yuma Economic getting the information from the per capita?
That's a good question. Well, since we only have 7.2% participation from the census so far, next year's going to be interesting.
Exactly. That's what I got on the census count right now. It seems kind of low.
Yeah. We're, we're not going to hit $36,000 if we get 7.2 participation. We're probably going to get $9,000. But that's on a different note. Julie, can you answer that question for me, please?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Julie.
Okay, great. Thank you. Well, Mayor, we are using the 2010 census data to base our per capita calculation from, and the per capita amount is a little bit below the national average. And we did that because we understand that our market is not as robust as some of the communities that were in this study. So we wanted to be fair and truly represent this area. But I would like to go back and say that when this letter was submitted, we didn't have the crisis that we're in right now. So I feel it is prudent that we just remain level, if that's possible. And I understand, if it's not, we're very grateful for the amount that we received last year. And I would like to forego the increase for this year, because I, I anticipate that our communities are going to see some tax revenue decreases due to the COVID. And I think it's an inopportune time to ask for an increase. And I, I'm not saying that, that it was, I, I hope Luis does not take that as, I'm criticizing him. I think he was very deserving, and he, I definitely support his increase. I just don't think it's prudent for us to be asking for an increase at this time, without knowing really what the full impact is going to be. So, this letter, as I said, was submitted back in February with the increase, and I don't think it's a good idea to ask for that at this time. We would request to remain level, if that's possible, but we completely understand, if after the budget is approved, and revenues are down, if there needs to be an amendment, we understand. So I just want to say that, and thank you again for the continued support you have given this organization, and we will continue to work very hard for the, for the community and the region.
Thank you, Julie. I just want to say, Julie, thank you for, for your, for your teamwork and guidance. I've seen you guys work very diligently throughout Yuma County, and I really appreciate what you guys have done. You've given us, we've asked you for summaries and reports, quarterly reports, which you have brought to us, and that's, that's what the council wanted, and that's what you provided with us. And I thank you so much. Every time I go to, well, when we were traveling, we would go to the Arizona Commission, we would go to different meetings. You were always there, representing Yuma County and your organization, and I really appreciate the hard work you do, especially with the Arizona Mexican Commission. And, and thank you for the gesture. It's really, it really makes a difference, because at this point in time, our revenue will be lower. We won't be seeing the numbers, probably, the big numbers probably three months from now. But it's something that we, we are going to have to be working with. The, the crossing overs, I mean, people are not buying, people, I mean, with everything going on, our sales tax revenue most likely will be low. So I have no problem keeping you where you were at in the fiscal year 1920, if, if at all possible. But I'll, we'll talk, I mean, I'll have council talk right now, but I have no problem leaving you at 51, 51,254. It would be very difficult for us to provide the 6,000. I, you, you, trust me, you, you more than earned it, and, and what you've done for, for Yuma County, and for the city of San Luis. I, I see, I see your work. And so, I really appreciate it. But at this point in time, it, it would be very, very difficult for us. Thank you, Julie.
And I understand that, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. I'm now going to open the floor to Council Vice Mayor Maria Cecilia Cruz.
Yes, Mayor, thank you for that gesture, Julie. We greatly appreciate it. As, as the mayor says, we will, we will see some, some funding decrease. So thank you so much. And thank you for your great work. As Mayor says, we do see you everywhere, representing the region.
Councilmember Matias, thank you. Councilmember Matias Rosales, any questions or concerns?
No, I'm, I'm okay with everything spoken.
Thank you. Councilmember Gloria Torres, any questions or concerns?
No, sir, no comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Mario Buchanan Jr., any questions or concerns?
No, Mayor, no more questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Africa Luna Carrasco, questions or concerns?
No, Mayor, just to agree that we should keep that as budgeted last year.
Thank you. Thank you, council member. Councilmember Jose Ponce, any questions or concerns?
Yes, Mayor. Thank Julie for, for being a conservative, a conservative. Yeah. Mayor, I think we, we should be a little bit conservative on, on the money, because of the COVID-19. We don't exactly what's going to happen down the road. And then, as far as the shows, you know, those exercises of so-called expos, I think, we don't know if we, exactly, we're going to be, actually, I mean, we want to have, we don't know if we're going to have them because of the COVID-19. So I think, that money, if we, if we're not, we won't be participating in those events, well, let's use the money and some other, some other organizations, like this one, where the Yuma Expo, I mean, where the Yuma Economic Development, you know, what I'm trying to say is, use the money wisely.
Yeah, yeah, no. It's something, and thank you, Councilmember Ponce. One of the things that, with, with the COVID situation, basically, our economy, our national economy has been hit dramatically. We are going to go in recession. We already are in a recession. But we've been fortunate, because over the years, since 2008, we've been running lean, our budget has been running very lean. We're used to cuts. We're used to situations where, where we're always seeing, we're always trying to struggle every year. But we've been planning this for almost 10 years now. So, but we, but, but, okay, go ahead.
Well, the reason I'm saying this, because when I inquire about the possibility of spraying our certain areas of the city, I, I was told that we didn't have the money, we don't have the manpower. So, we knew how the money, so, you know, that's what I'm saying, try to use it wisely.
Yeah, of course. We, we have always used it wisely, and we will continue. There's certain things that we, we're not going to be able to do. But one thing that we are going to be able to, I mean, one thing we have to get ready, is that we need the jobs, we need the exposure. Our Port of Entry 1, Port of Entry 2 will get modified, will bring, it will bring a lot of jobs, necessary jobs to the region, especially because we're going to have close to 30% unemployment. Those are the numbers that we see. Those are, those are the numbers during the summertime. But with the, with the construction of the new Port of Entry, we're looking at, we're looking at millions of dollars coming to our community in regards to jobs. So we are going to need the facilities. We are going to need someone to be working along with, with, with our economic development. What Julie is doing, whatever, what they're doing is actually very beneficial, not only for, for Yuma County, but for the city of San Luis. And I agree with you. We need to be cautious. We need to be very cautious what we stand. Gracias. Thank you so much.
Thank, thank you.
So, we're, I guess, we're going to go ahead with 51,254 on that one, if I am incorrect, on the consensus was?
Okay, duly noted.
Okay, now, we're going to go with...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Keep, keep up the good work, Julie. Thank you.
Thank you. We really appreciate you.
Mayor, before I continue, as we go down the list, would you like to keep all the participants on the meeting, or they can...
They can, they can, they can leave. I mean, yeah, but it's going to be, interesting. It's going to be a little bit long, so, it's okay. Thank you. If you, if you decide to leave, it's okay. Thank you.
But feel free, feel free to stay, Luis and Julie. I would just, I mean, you're, you're with us already, but just, I ask, just in case you wanted to leave the meeting or do something else. Our next item on the list is the Greater Yuma Port Authority for $50,000. Pretty much, we're...
Okay. I don't know about the chairman. I have a problem with the chairman. Though, hey, since Matias became chairman, she, I, I seen the Greater Yuma Port Authority really move and be influential, and I appreciate every, the hard work you do, Councilmember Matias. It's really impressive what you've done, and it's really impressive when, when, when we go to DC, or we go to Hermosillo, we go to Phoenix. Not only do we go as the city of San Luis, but we also go as the Yuma, the Greater Yuma Port Authority. And, and I appreciate the hard work, and I appreciate what you do. And, Matias, I am proud of what you do. Thank you so much. And $50,000, I know that's the quota that each entity does, and I, I have no problem. At first, maybe, maybe seven years ago, I was questioning why we're giving. But now, when there's, there's an industrial park development that is growing, that basically lots are sold, and the economic developments that are occurring, it's just amazing. So I stand corrected seven years ago. And, and I appreciate what you said, and I appreciate your hard work, and I appreciate what, what everyone in the organization at the Greater Yuma Port Authority is doing. And so, it's going to be, it's going to be tough. The COVID situation is going to be tough, but we have a very good, very strong Greater Yuma Port Authority, and thank you. I have no problem with the $50,000. I will now open the mics to Vice Mayor.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Yes, that's what's been requested on an annual basis. So, yes, we should just go ahead and continue with that. And as you said, yes, Matias has done an excellent job with the Port Authority. When we go out and to meetings, and he's very highly recognized, and because of his hard work. So, thank you, Matias.
Good job, Matias. Councilmember Matias Rosales.
Does that mean I get a raise? No, again, I don't want to credit here. We got to thank the, the partners in this, because without the partners' investment each year, we wouldn't have the director that we have on staff now. That, I think, has made, made the biggest difference. I mean, Ms. Bune has been done, doing a good job since she's came aboard, puts in order to do this direction versus being a board that, Port Authority... to do this action versus being a board that, Port Authority that was just out there not knowing what to do. So that was one of the first goals that was provided by Council and the mayor, you know, to make sure that we make this Port Authority something that is an actual Port Authority usable for the region, and that's the way we went, and we're there. Don't know what the future is going to tell, but we are, I mean, quick update, the Port Authority is out of lots. We're completing our Phase 3 because we have people asking for more locations to buy and build more, hopefully more industrial and factories and storage. So doing a good job, and I believe Buna is on the line after councilmembers give their comments. If you guys have any questions, she'll be here to answer any questions.
Any, any questions? Okay. Gloria, any questions, concerns?
No, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Mario Buchanan, any questions or concerns?
No, Mayor, no questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Africa Luna Carrasco, questions or concerns?
No, sir, no questions. Thank you, Matias, for your work.
Thank you. Councilmember Jose Ponce, any questions or concerns?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're going to go ahead and proceed. Let's see here. Does anyone have questions for the new director?
No, Mayor, I don't.
Okay, I saw a mayor. Buna, thank you so much for everything you do. I really appreciate your hard work, and you made a big difference. Thank you. Is she still on the line?
Yes, she's there. Buna? Maybe she's muted.
Okay, yeah, she's muted.
No, that's not good.
It's a mess.
There she is.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. This is Buna George with the Greater Yuma Port Authority, and I just wanted to obviously thank the city for their continued support. And just to share a few wins that we've done with the Magrito Industrial Park. As you know, we're utilizing this as our economic development tool to recruit industries. We have an estimated 15 million of capital investments. That is supposed to go into the park within the next two to three years. So that was really good news as we're moving forward. And I just want to thank the leadership that I've received since I've been in the position, especially to my chairman, the board, and the various mayors. And that city assembly staff has also been really key as far as the continued growth within the Port Authority. So I just wanted to extend my thanks.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. So noted. Gracias. We're going to go with the next. So we're going to, again, go ahead and proceed with the 50,000. According to the consensus, I will go, Tadeo, what's our next one?
All right, we are now on to the Humane Society. As you are aware, about a year, two years back, the Humane Society, and I believe Annette is present, we went into a standard yearly rate of $50,000. They're requesting the same amount. However, they like to, if approved, to receive an extra $5,000 that would go towards, towards spaying and neutering animals within San Luis, and for that. Annette, anything you have to say on that?
Yes, please. Do we have anyone from
That is, yes, this is Andrea Cornet. She, Annette, is away from Yuma right now, so I'm stepping in in her place. And so we would like to use that money to be able to spay and neuter dogs and cats from the residents of San Luis to help control population.
I think that's something essential, and I think it's a good service provided. And I know, I hear of constantly residents going over to Mexico and having that done, and I'm pretty sure it's pricey there. But I think it's a necessity. It's something to control our pet population. And so I have no problem with these services you've been providing. I've been very grateful for the services you provide. Your services are, thank you, very warranted. Thank you. I have no problem with the 5,000. But I will now open the floor. Vice Mayor, any questions or concerns?
Yes, Mayor, I'm okay with that additional $5,000 for the reason being is we get so many complaints about the stray cats. So I think this will be very beneficial to the entire city. So thank you, Humane Society.
I think that 5,000 is a small price to pay for the stray cat population increase that we've seen over the years, and I think that is, that is the solution. Councilmember Matias Rosales, questions or concerns?
No, Mayor, none.
Okay, thank you. Gloria Torres, any questions or concerns?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Mario Buchanan Jr., any questions or concerns?
Yes, Mayor, do we have a limit per household, you know, like per house? I mean, how many can they do spraying and neutering? But just, you know, just a simple question.
Okay, no, so noted. Can we answer that question, please?
I honestly don't know the answer to that question because I didn't see the letter that was presented, and this was kind of a last minute thing. What we've done in the past is that there was, with the city of Yuma, there was a limit per household as far as they could do, you know, up to four in the household. And then after that, it would needed to be spread around.
Now, for those people who have more than four pets, yeah, it can get expensive. But then again, you decide to have more than four pets.
Correct.
Does that answer your question?
This is Kay.
Oh, no, really, this is San Luis, you know, but we're just
Yeah, okay.
This is Kay. In the letter, it says that they have to prove that they're San Luis citizens, residents of the city.
Okay, so they have to prove
So at least, yeah, but how many per household that we didn't get in the letter. So probably first come, first served. Would you say that, Humane Society?
Yes, and historically, we've had, you know, a little bit of trouble getting San Luis residents to come forward with that. So it definitely, you know, first come, first served. Sounds correct.
Okay, good. Councilmember Buchanan, is that okay?
Well, we can get that answer. At least we can have an idea of that. It was just a simple question.
Okay, thank you. So noted. Thank you. So if we get like a, like a something from Humane Society, I mean, it's a, it's a well noted cost. Councilmember, who am I? Councilmember Africa Luna Carrasco, questions or concerns?
Yeah, Mayor, just to add to Mario's question. So there is four per household, but is there like a limit citywide as how many they will neuter or spay whatever? That if they can also find an answer to that. As far as the limit for the entire city, like if they only do like 5,000 animals or something like that, you know what I'm trying to say?
Oh, how many animals can be done for that amount of money?
Yes.
Okay, I can get the answer to that.
Good, good. And I know we can't do the whole city. I mean, 5,000 is not going to cover the whole city, but it's, but it's good to know. I, no, that's a good question. Very good question.
And it also depends on cats and dogs. I mean, because cats and dogs are going to be different amounts for how much it costs to actually spay and neuter. So it depends on, you know, how many people come forward with cats and how many people come forward with dogs.
Yeah, so if you can just like add all those details, that'd be just interesting to know. But I do agree that it is much needed within our city, but I'd just like to have more detailed information.
So noted, Africa. Thank you. Councilmember Jose Ponce, questions or concerns?
Well, no, no, really, because I agree with Councilmember Mario. We kind of, that, I don't know. It's hard to come up with the right answer because you're right too. I mean, it's $1,000. I mean, actually, it's nothing. I mean, we're not doing the whole city. But we do what we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ponce. And it's so noted. I think it's 5,000 is a small price for what can be done. And the thing is, it's going to cost us more with the increased number. And so, no, I agree. But let's try to get that information for councilmembers because residents will start asking. And I know we have not, the city of San Luis has not participated much in the spay and neutering. But I think once we know, once they know, I think we're going to start seeing an increase, and we need that. We had, we have a stray cat population problem, and so it needs to be dealt with. So thank you. So at this point in time, it stands at 50,000, or actually, it stands at 50 plus five. Okay, Tadeo?
Okay, 55,000.
Now, we're going to do with the Pep Youth Build?
Yes, that is correct. Last year, we provided them with $30,000. Thirty, yes, $30,000. They're not requesting any increase. Therefore, they like to be kept at the same amount if possible.
I know the Pep Tech, the Youth Build, has been gradually increasing in its membership, and I've actually seen some of the postgraduates working in our community and actually going to the university, and I'm so proud of what they do. So I think 30,000 is a small price for what we see, and it's something that I see every time I get invited to the graduation. The motivation, the, I mean, last time, the last class, I mean, the vast majority were going to Arizona College. I mean, they were going to further their education, and that's our goal. And so I'm very proud what Youth Build does. They volunteer, they help. And when there's a need, for example, on the DES, they've been helping with masks, they've been helping with water, they've been helping with food. And so this is, this is where San Luis shows its true colors, and it shows that it has big hearts. So I'm very, very proud of what Pep Youth is doing. And 30,000 is just something, it's a small token that, that we get so much from it. It's just a humongous investment. So thank you, Youth Build, and so I really appreciate. Now, I will now open the mics to councilmembers. Vice Mayor, questions or concerns, please?
Yes, Mayor, comment. I just want to thank Pep Youth Build because they always helped Proverbs 31 Home, nonprofit, and also the South Yuma County Domestic Violence Coalition. The last event they participated in helped was the Mother-Son Dinner Dance, which I know they helped us tremendously. They helped us serve food. And besides, they were just a great joy to have there. So thank you, Pep Youth Build, and I agree with the money that they're requesting.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Matias, any questions or concerns?
No, none at the moment, and thank you for everything that you do.
Councilmember Gloria Torres, any questions or concerns?
No, Mayor.
Councilmember Mario Buchanan Jr., any questions or concerns?
No, Mayor, not at this moment. Thank you.
Councilmember Africa Luna Carrasco, any questions or concerns?
No, sir, none.
Thank you. Councilmember Ponce, any questions or concerns?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. So as we stand, the Pep Tech continues with the 30,000. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Then, yeah, okay, go ahead.
We are now to the Yuma Metropolitan Planning Organization, YMPO. Their estimated dues have a slight decrease. This is not their final request, but their assessment so far puts us at $13,319.42, which is a decrease of $417.31.
Wow. That's a first.
We have Executive Director Ward and Board Member Maria Cecilia Cruz present to answer any questions regarding that amount.
First and foremost, I would like to thank YMPO for everything you've done over the years. It's amazing the amount of work you guys have done. It's amazing how not only, not only you represent, I mean, you represent Yuma County. We're seeing the projects, we're seeing the things you're supporting, and we're seeing the influence you guys have in the state with ADOT and everyone else. I just, I am very grateful for YMPO. When I first started as a council, I actually did know the importance, how important YMPO is to the region. Over the years, I've learned, I was a member, I believe, for two years, and I've learned a lot what YMPO means. And Councilmember Vice Mayor Cecilia Ramos, I really appreciate, oh, Cecilia Cruz, I'm sorry, the great work you do. It's amazing how your participation, your presence makes a big difference, not only here in Yuma County, but also when you go to the state and when you've been in O'Gallus. And so I am very grateful for what you do, and it's amazing what YMPO can do for, not only for our city, but for Yuma County as a whole. So I am very impressed and very proud of what you guys have done. Thank you. We have the director online.
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much. I appreciate it, and I echo your comments with regard to Vice Mayor Cruz.
Thank you. I mean, I just want to say that YMPO has shown leadership and has shown the state of where Yuma County stands. And, no, I hear the comments, I read the emails, and I am very impressed for everything. Your staff is just amazing. So when we need something, your staff is always there. And I am so grateful. The city of San Luis is very grateful for your services. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you. So I think 13,736.74 is a good amount. So I'm going to go ahead and open the mic to Vice Mayor.
Yes, Mayor, thank you, Paul, for everything you do as the director of YMPO. Whenever there is a problem, I can run to you and ask. And thank you for guiding us through that funding for the Los Alamos area on that dangerous curve. So I just want to thank you so much for that, helping us with that.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Matias Rosales, questions or concerns?
No, sir, no questions, and look forward to the future, and, as Sir Chavez, the Lord, assists.
Oh, $30 million, that's what I hear. So that's a good one. Thank you, Matias. Councilmember Gloria Torres, questions or concerns?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Mario Buchanan Jr., any questions or concerns?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Africa Luna Carrasco, questions or concerns?
No, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Jose Ponce, questions or concerns?
No, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, guys. So it proceeds. I believe what was budgeted was 13,736.74?
Yes.
Okay, but they're requesting 13,319.42?
Correct.
So what is it?
13,319 with 42 cents.
Okay, that's the requested amount? Okay. We're going to go ahead and proceed with that one.
Okay, thank you.
But if, but if they got adjusted to another 417, we can work with that. But as of right now, it's 13,319.42. Okay?
Yes, any changes to any of these amounts will be, can be adjusted through the, through the scary resolution that will be coming in the next, in one of your next meetings.
Thank you so much. Okay, so it's so noted. So, okay, can we go with the next one, please?
Next one, we have the Yuma County Intergovernmental Public Transportation Authority, YCAT. When we got this letter, they hadn't, their amounts hadn't been approved by the board. It was $70,573, same as last year. I'm not aware, we're not aware of any increases. I don't know if Mr. Velas, who is our representative on the board, has any different information than what we have before us. And also Shelley from YCPTA is present as well.
Well, first and foremost, I'd like to thank it's the amazing job YCAT is doing. It's something that our community, I keep seeing the buses. I know a school has been out, but I see the buses still moving. So I really appreciate for the, for the form of transit we're getting. And so, no, I have no problem with the amount noted. So thank you so much, YCAT. Maybe, well, one thing, I do have a comment is, Ralph, do you know when we might be getting new signs? Because I can tell you right now, all the signs that were posted several years ago are faded, and the schedule is no longer there, especially, go ahead.
No, it's a good question. I can find out.
Yes, please, especially in the, in la sección F, back there. I've had several comments regarding that they're basically, they're playing. You can't read any schedule. So if we can have those replaced somehow, some way, that would be some way, that would be very beneficial for our community.
May, may I comment?
Yes, please.
Hi, this is Shelley Quiggar from YCPTA. Thank you, Mayor, and, and council members. We have put in an order for new signs to be placed at all new bus stops, so those will be in place soon. Also, new, uh, bus shelters as well. We're waiting on approval for a bus shelter permit. So I would like to thank the City of San Luis and their continued support. You are our highest ridership, as far as our, our, our continued system. Um, also the highest hit on no fares because we're not collecting no fares at the moment, but we continue to support and provide as much transportation, transportation as we can at this time. Looking at ridership numbers, we will increase ridership as it continues, you know, if we need more service, we'll provide more service. Um, if there's anything we can do to help at this time, we've not asked for an increase in, um, the funds from the City of San Luis since, I believe, 2012, if not before.
Yeah.
I just really appreciate the City of San Luis and all our patrons and it makes our service special. You know, we want to make sure that we're providing the best service we can at this time of need and it's crucial, but I, I thank you, City of San Luis, for supporting us over the years and I look forward to many years to come. Thank you.
Those words are, are, are well, well, well noted and, and we really appreciate, uh, what you guys do and have done for our community and so I am very grateful for, for the drivers and for everyone and, and thank you for giving us that note regarding the signs and, and the shaded structures. I really appreciate what you guys do and if there's, if there's, if there's a city that's very grateful for what you guys do, it's the City of San Luis, it's amazing, uh, and you provide, uh, you provide the vast majority of transportation that we're young going to the university, going to AWC and so, uh, and I thank you for keeping our kids safe and, and it's amazing. Uh, continue doing the hard work and we will continue supporting, definitely, and so I'm so very grateful, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and open the floor. Vice Mayor, any questions or concerns?
Yes, Mayor, comment. Uh, thank you Shelley for everything you do, um, you're doing an amazing job. Um, I consider YCAT, um, an essential service to the City of San Luis. I know our, our residents depend highly on your service, so thank you so much.
Councilmember Rosales, any questions or concerns?
Just want to say thank you to Shelley and YCAT as well. Just put for thought, I would, I know we've talked about this in the past with Ralph and I was supposed to go to one of the meetings, but I would like to see maybe redoing one of the routes to turn on four to Union to six, that way at least we get coverage to the library and the county courthouse and maybe go all the way straight down to, to Guastiki and then go to downtown. That little minor change that, that'll make the bus go three blocks over is actually going to connect the city more and make it a more logistical route for our residents, so put for thought. Um, I know it's not the time, but maybe I'll go to one of the board meetings and bring it up for them.
That's a good observation. Good observation, Matias, I really appreciate that and that's so true.
Also, can you hear me right now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, we are in the middle of doing our short range tran, transit plan, so any suggestions, ideas, anything right now during the next few months would be greatly appreciated to help us with our, our plan going forward. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Best efficient, Matias? Very efficient. Uh, Councilmember Gloria Torres, any questions or concerns?
No, Mayor, yes, thank you to YCAT.
Thank you so much, so noted. Uh, Councilmember Mario Buchanan, any questions or concerns?
Uh, no, Mayor, thank you, Matias, for that observation.
So noted, thank you. Councilmember Africa Luna Carrasco, questions or concerns?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Jose Ponce, any questions or concerns?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, so noted, so the, uh, the YCAT, the 7,000, I mean, 70,573.00, as noted, okay? Thaddeus?
Fully noted.
Thank you so much. Uh, can we go with the next one, please?
Uh, yes, we have the newspaper publications, that is, that donation to anyone, rather is used by Mayor and Council for the quarterly reports, uh, newspaper publications, end of the year report, um, messages through, for events, Mother's Day, uh, holidays and important messages, uh, and we're not foreseeing any increases on that one.
And that's per law, we have to have a certain, certain amount of circulation, so, um, so noted. Um, so that stands, we can't change that, so that's, that's, that's how we, uh, we maintain our, our legal status in regards to publications, required publications. So, uh, I'm going to go ahead and open the mics real quick. Uh, Vice Mayor, any questions or concerns?
No, Mayor, that's good.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Matias Rosales, questions or concerns?
None, Mayor.
Councilmember Gloria Torres, any questions or concerns?
No, Mayor, no questions.
Councilmember Mario Buchanan Jr., any questions or concerns?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Africa Luna Carrasco, any questions or concerns?
No, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Jose Ponce, any questions or concerns?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Thaddeus, it proceeds as stated.
Thank you. Uh, next we have JCG Technologies, which, which is the annual payment for the chambers recording system to do the minutes. That is a set amount, um, there's no change, um, it stays at $7,000.
Okay, if there's any objections, I'm going to go ahead and, and, and cover the, as that, I mean, that's the set amount, unless, unless a member of council is, is objecting to, to, uh, our, our ways of keeping record, so, uh, well, I'm going to go ahead to keep it, to keep it fair. Uh, Council, Vice Mayor, any questions or concerns?
None, Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Matias, any questions or concerns?
None, Mayor.
Gloria Torres, any questions or concerns?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Mario Buchanan Jr., questions or concerns?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Africa Luna Carrasco, any questions or concerns?
None.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Ponce, any questions or concerns?
No, sir.
Thank you so much, as noted, so, uh, Thaddeus, as, as stated, okay?
Thank you. Um, we are now, um, we now have Amberly's Place, uh, last year we provided them with 41,808 dollars. They're asking for a slight increase of 192 dollars to cover, um, an additional, um, car insurance payments to be at a total of 42,000 dollars even. Uh, we have Amberly's Place present and Chief Jessup, who is one of their board members, in case we have any questions.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening. What, uh, what I want to say before we start is that, uh, right now with the whole COVID, uh, COVID-19 situation, there, there are going to be increased cases of domestic violence, there are going to be a lot more cases. Uh, uh, family units are, are, are actually basically at home and so it's unfortunate, but nationwide, we've seen, I, I've seen actually an increase in such cases and so, um, I am very grateful for, for what Amberly Place is doing, uh, and so, uh, I think we need to be very cautious at this point in time in regards, uh, uh, because, uh, most likely, numbers are going to increase unfortunately and we need to be ready and we need to have an advocate, we need to have someone there. Uh, and so, uh, at this point in time, I, I would just like to say I'm very grateful for the service you're providing at this point in time, especially right now in time of crisis. I know it's hard, I know, uh, a lot of communities, a lot, a lot of cities, municipalities will be cutting their budgets and, uh, I know it's, it's even stronger, it's even harder for, for organizations like Amberly's Place to continue the, the level of services you provide, it's just amazing. And so, uh, Chief Jessup, thank you, thank you for being the board member and, and thank you for, for your hard work also, so I have no problem supporting Amberly's Place and adding that 100 and, uh, uh, what was it, 192 dollars without any problems. I will, um, any comments or concerns from, I'm going to go ahead and open the mic to Amberly's Place or, or, or our chief, if he's available.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, this is Diane. I wanted to let you know that we just got the equipment in today for our Strive Video Court, so one will be put in San Luis in our office there and that will make it possible for victims not only go online and fill out for orders of protection, but they will be able to go online now and have their court with the judge. They don't have to go over to municipal court if they feel unsafe with that, so we can have those orders for protection done and they're not going to have to wait and spend time away from work, which they fear losing their job. So we're excited about that. The other thing is, I know, I know that you're aware that we signed an agreement with the Mexican consulate and they are going to help us with Mexican nationals that come over to our country and they need to stay here because of the violence and one of the issues we've always had is with the paperwork and the legality of helping these people become legal citizens. And so the consulate is going to help us with that, which I am so very thankful for that they've reached out and said, you know, how can we partner with this better? So I just want you to know that there's been some improvements and the other thing is Voices for Victims is moving into our office and that is, those are attorneys, that they're here to provide services for victims free of charge when their rights have been violated or when someone is trying to get them to do something that they don't have to do and it's a free, they're free attorneys and they're phenomenal, they're the best. And so we're excited about some changes and things that will happen because it's going to help the people in San Luis just as much as it is anybody else.
Thank you so much, that's being very proactive and, and that's an excellent idea and so anytime we can do something to prevent, uh, from, from the victims feeling, uh, they've already, they've already gone through a lot and so anything we can do to minimize that exposure, minimize that feeling, uh, we're very grateful, so thank you, Amberly's Place for what you do. Um, I will, uh, Chief, any comments or questions, concerns?
I do. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, appreciate the opportunity just to speak on behalf of Amberly's Place. Um, as you mentioned, there has been a great uptick in domestic violence cases, not only here in San Luis, which we've seen and responded to, but across the county with all of the departments and I think that most of us, if we pay attention to the news, have seen a great increase across the state of Arizona and the nation, so the services right now of Amberly's Place means more, uh, to us now than it ever has before. It's been a privilege to serve on Diane's board for the past three years and I will continue to do so as long as I can. It's something that we have to do. Uh, one of the things, I was talking with, uh, the judge just today as well, uh, there's been a tremendous and, and thank you to, uh, Council for asking those tough questions a year ago, but Diane and her staff is to be absolutely commended for stepping up to the plate and really solving, uh, some of the issues that, uh, the judge had as well last year and I know that the Vice Mayor had, had, um, worked with, uh, some of the things, uh, that were happening as well. Um, I just want to let you know that there's been a tremendous effort to improve and there has been a tremendous movement, uh, to improve the services as well. I think now they go beyond the call of duty more so, uh, simply because they're always on call, they've always got somebody available, even through this COVID-19, they have always been there when our officers have needed an advocate there on the phone, online or in person and taking the precautions, so I just want to let, uh, Council know that, that the police department greatly appreciates it and in this very modest request for a little bit of additional funds, I think it is very much deserved on their behalf.
Mayor, this is, this, this is Kate.
Yes, Kate.
Uh, I'm very excited about this, uh, maybe, uh, COVID-19 helped Diane get this, um, remote access, uh, that's a very great thing. I know that the courthouse, there's a lot of intimidation, um, at a courthouse for victims to even just walk through those doors, so I will get, um, Sylvia in the prosecutor's office to understand exactly what that is so that she can, uh, help, uh, route victims to that service, that's just phenomenal and, um, I am so happy to hear that she has two sources of attorneys. When I was working for Legal Aid, we did as many divorces and, and child custody as we could for domestic violence victims, but there was, you know, we usually only had one staff attorney and two paralegals and, uh, the need was just always overwhelming, so I'm so glad she found two sources for more attorneys.
All right, good. Thank you, Kate, thank you so noted, thank you so much. Uh, now open the floor, uh, Vice Mayor, any questions, concerns?
Uh, no, Mayor, no questions, just a comment, um, so thank you Amberly's Place for everything you do and, um, you know, those additional services are going to be just great at the courthouse, so thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Matias Rosales, any questions or concerns?
None, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Gloria Torres, any questions or concerns?
No, Mayor, no questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Mario Buchanan Jr., any questions or concerns?
No, Mayor, no questions.
Uh, Councilmember Africa Luna Carrasco, questions or concerns?
No, sir, no questions, just, uh, thank Amberly's for their, um, service.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, Jose Ponce, questions or concerns?
No question, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you so much. So as noted, uh, consensus was Amberly's Place, uh, uh, what was requested plus those 100 and, uh, what's it, 41,808, uh, in addition to those 192.00. Okay, Thaddeus?
Okay.
Okay, uh, go ahead, our next subject?
Okay, we are, I think on that list, uh, we can change the name, it says, uh, GYDC by National Forefronted, um, should be just, uh, Forefronted, um, we all know what it is. Um, I would just confirm the amount, as, we didn't ask, uh, Mr. Mendez if there were any changes, but, um, I don't recall Mayor or, um, engineers here from any of the meetings about any increases that we're aware of.
I believe, I believe it, it's the same amount. Uh, let me, let me tell you what's going on with the forefront, with everything going on with the COVID, uh, it's taken a lot of, of resources and time from the, from the mayors. It's just, uh, every single mayor has been working probably double time, uh, and so, uh, we, we have not had a chance, an opportunity, but, uh, our, our, our CEO is continues, uh, he's continues working with our counterparts in Mexico and, and different entities and, uh, just most recently, I will be, I will be asking, uh, Forefronted, uh, the mayors to participate, uh, in a campaign to, uh, along with the union of our CBP officers. Uh, we, we, we will be starting a campaign, uh, in regards to the number of crossing and the people who are crossing, uh, going to and from Mexico or to the US. Uh, the numbers of wait times are extremely long and so, uh, we will be starting an educational program and we're gonna, I, I will be requesting, uh, Forefronted to be participating on this one. These are, these are the things where Forefronted is so important because, uh, it, it takes into account all, all, all our communities, municipalities and also the mayors, so, uh, so, uh, 7,000 is, 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 is very, it's not much compared to what the impact, uh, all the mayors and, and staff can actually do, so, um, it's, it's, uh, it's a worthwhile and it's something we need to continue supporting, uh, if we want to continue working as a region, so I have no problem with that, so. Uh, I'm going to go ahead and open the floor. Vice Mayor, questions or concerns?
No, uh, no, no questions, Mayor, just that he's doing, uh, an excellent job. I have seen him and presenting in a couple of times and he's doing an amazing job, so thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, Councilmember Rosales, any questions or concerns?
No, sir, none.
Thank you. Councilmember Gloria Torres, any questions or concerns?
No, Mayor, no question.
Thank you. Mario, Mario Buchanan Jr., questions or concerns?
No, Mayor, no questions.
Africa Luna Carrasco, Councilmember, any question or concerns?
No, sir, none.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Jose Ponce, any questions or concerns?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, so the consensus noted, uh, the total amount of, uh, what was it, 7,060?
Um, Mayor, if we can have that with a tentative amount, since, uh, Mr. Mendez's contract is a, um, per capita amount and the board haven't, hasn't had a chance to discuss that, um, and it might change.
Okay, yeah, let's, let's go ahead and do it because, uh, yeah, we are, we have multiple projects occurring at this time, multiple multinational projects that we're probably we're going to need after the COVID, uh, after we control, after we go through the COVID-19 situation. to need after the COVID, after we control, after we go through the COVID-19 situation. So we need to be ready. We need to have those economic engines ready to go. And so, no, I agree. So thank you. So noted. So please make those adjustments, Tadeo.
Thank you.
Thank you. What's our next?
We have the Yuma Community Food Bank, who last year got $25,000, and this year is not requesting an increase. It is my understanding that we have share present in case we have any questions.
Yuma Community Bank, they're requesting 25,000?
Yes.
Who do we have, who do we have from the food bank?
It's Chara Whitehead.
Oh, welcome. Thank you for joining us.
You're welcome.
I just want to say that it's amazing job what you guys are doing at this point in time. I mean, you've always been there on crisis, especially with this pandemic. It's making an impact in every community. It doesn't matter which community, and I appreciate the hard work. It's hard. Being in the food bank, it's just hard. And so I know members of the community have stepped up, and the volunteers and the National Guard has been there. And I really appreciate for what you do. It's just a small token, a very important token to Yuma County and our community. So I appreciate everything you do. I really do.
Thank you. We appreciate being able to serve.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open the floors. I have no problem with the 25,000. I'm going to go ahead and open the floor with Vice Mayor, any questions or concerns?
None, Mayor. They're doing an excellent job. So this is a perfect amount for me.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Matia Rosales, questions or concerns?
No, Mayor, none. Thank you for all of what they do.
Thank you. Councilmember Torres, any questions or concerns?
Well, just thank food bank for all the help that we have for our community.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Councilmember Buchanan Jr., any questions or concerns?
No, Mayor, no questions.
Councilmember Luna Carrasco, any questions or concerns?
No, sir, none.
Thank you. Councilmember Ponce, any questions or concerns?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. So as noted, Tadeo, the amount of 25,000.
All right, thank you. The next is the snack pack program at the youth center, but this year they're not seeking to do that program. So it's zero for that amount.
Okay, so that's an extra 5,000. Okay. So noted.
Can I interject something in there in that regard?
Please, please do.
We are still planning on providing snack packs. Louis and I have been working closely because the year before, we had received funding, but because of changeover with staffing on his side and on my side, we weren't able to perform. So this year, we are, we had the funding, we are providing it. Louis is using it during this time when we have so many people staying at home, trying to be able to give that out to the kids at his discretion. We are still working closely to be able to see if there's an ability for us within the budget that we've gotten approved by you, to be able to still work with him in that regard. So we're going to try to do this and stay within budget, is my only addition to that.
Please let us know if you're caught in a situation, if we can do something about it, maybe later on. We're very flexible, okay? We're going to help you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So as it stands?
Yes.
Okay.
Then we have the Freedom Newspapers of Southwest Arizona, which is our yearly Yuma Sun subscription at $650. Not change on that one?
There's no change on that one. So we don't, I mean, that's part of it. So that's 650.
Correct.
Unless any member of Council is objecting to it, I'm going to go ahead and approve it as is. Okay, good.
Okay. Next, we have the civic donations, which is your donations that you make to the community for different students, sports team, nonprofit organizations, and civic contributions are done on your behalf throughout the year. Not change is expected on that amount.
Thank you. This money is that Council uses to, when members of our community are going to participate, for example, in certain events, or specifically for that actually of our residents. I foresee next year, or this coming year, as the kids have been at home, and I've been getting a lot of comments through Messenger and through different social medias regarding the kids. I mean, they want sports. They want to go out there. We just, it's amazing what the talent we have. I believe one of our high school students just recently got recognized for having the highest goal ever, the number of goals. And so it's just amazing what our kids are doing nowadays. So I think that 22,000 is more than enough at this point in time. But I am very grateful with Council for allowing us to have this money available to help especially our youth, especially our kids who need to travel and represent the city. So 22,000, I mean, I have no problem with that. I'm going to go ahead and open the floors. Vice Mayor, any questions or concerns?
No, Mayor, that's a good amount. That's okay with me.
Thank you. Councilmember Matia Rosales, questions or concerns?
No, Mayor, none.
Councilmember Gloria Torres, questions or concerns?
No, Mayor.
Councilmember Buchanan, any questions or concerns?
No, Mayor, no questions.
Councilmember Africa Luna Carrasco, questions or concerns?
Mayor, I just have a question. How much money was contributed to civic donations for this past fiscal year, or for the current fiscal year?
I can come back to you in a few minutes. Francis can run that account number and see how much we've given up. So I'll give you that amount in a few minutes.
Okay.
Unless, do you have it, Megan?
I know.
That's fine. I agree with the budgeted amount. It's good to have, but I just want to know how much was given up.
Let me, I think.
I know we didn't go over the 22,000. I mean, I know.
No, we did not.
We have never gone over the 22,000. But it's a good number to have. But no, it would be a good idea to say how much we spent last year. But I believe the year before, we spent a lot more the year before.
Yes, we went over last year.
Yeah. Last year? By how much? The year before?
Okay, yeah.
I know the year before we did.
We'll give you that number. So we're 22 for now, or, or Councilmember Luna, were you thinking of increasing or decreasing, or just?
No, I think the amount that was allocated is good. I just want to know how much was, you know, we've been approached by different groups, organizations within our community, and how much we've been giving out, just for informational, yes.
Okay. I'll try to give you the number right now, or get back to you on that one.
Give us those numbers, okay? Thank you. Good question, Councilmember Carrasco. Very good question. Go ahead.
Okay. Now we have the...
No, wait, wait, I still have Councilmember Ponce.
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Ponce, any questions or concerns?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead. Proceed, Tadeo.
My apologies. Now we have the Comic-Con. Last year, they requested, and we provided them with $5,000. They're requesting the same amount this year. And it is my understanding that we have Mr. Carrillo on the line, if we have any questions.
I have a question for Mr. Carrillo. Carrillo, how was your Comic-Con this year? What was the turnout?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. The Comic-Con was good attended. We did not have increased attendees. And now I realize that it was because mostly some of those people that did not attend were kind of afraid of the situation that we went through. The participants, and the actors, and the artists, and the cosplayers was very good. Some of the members of the city of San Luis were part of our helpers, and it was very well-attended. And we're a little, we don't know how this is going to turn out. And when we submitted the request for additional assistance for next year, it was way before this whole situation turned way heated. But it was well-attended, and we have evidence in numbers and also in participants.
Mr. Carrillo, when is the date, tentative date for the Comic-Con at this point in time? Or has it been set?
We have it tentatively for March. I've been talking with Mr. Galvez, and we're still debating on, you know, how this is going to turn out. But that would be March, the first week of March, on the weekend.
Well, I'm very hopeful. By then, we should have a vaccine, and we should actually have a treatment. And so I'm very hopeful by then, we should have this well under control. And that's what I'm hoping. And so...
That's what we're praying for, yes, sir.
Yes, and I think you should plan, you should, there's enough time to plan for the Comic-Con. I think the whole situation has been affected. And I think we're going to really need to be offering the services that we provide. And Comic-Con is a service we provide our community. And so I foresee, I honestly foresee the Comic-Con of next March occurring. So I have no problem funding you the 5,000 at this point in time.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, this is Councilmember Buchanan. I have a concern.
Yes, sure.
Yeah, one of my questions is that, from the feedback that we've been receiving, either from them or from Francis, pictures, that info, I don't see a lot of participation. The last previous pictures that we had, I saw the same people and the same pictures. But I was just wondering, is it working out for San Luis? I'll be honest, I don't participate myself, but this is for the community, and I just wanted to make sure if it's working out or not. And that was just one of my biggest concerns for any...
Mr. Buchanan, in the view of the volunteers, it's kind of working the way that it was intended for. Because being an event in San Luis, Arizona, the goal was to attract people to San Luis, and that continues to be one of the highlights. Unfortunately, the number of attendees from San Luis continues to be minimal. Most of the people that come to this event come from Yuma, and they also come from across the border. Most of the artists that visit us come from Tucson, Phoenix, and, you know, the surrounding cities. Unfortunately, I agree with you, the audience of San Luis continues to be probably not knowledgeable of this type of event. And, you know, there's nothing that we can do about it. The main goal was to highlight San Luis and put San Luis on the map in regards to this particular popular event, type of genre. And we have achieved the goal of bringing people from other surrounding areas.
I know for a fact that I believe San Diego Council canceled their summer Comic-Con. Am I correct?
They did. They did, sir, yes.
Mr. Carrillo, so for your goal, are you obtaining your goal? I mean, is it working out for you? What's your answer on that?
Personally, we have always achieved the goal, because there isn't any other event similar to what we bring to the community. Therefore, it's just giving an alternate option for our community. And yes, the goal has been achieved, because that's the goal, to offer alternate attractions to the community.
Thank you, Mr.
Well, thank you very much for your answer on that. And I hope that we can keep working out on this one, and you keep working on your highlights for San Luis, and keep inviting people, and let's get the word around, so we can, you know, keep helping out on this Comic-Con.
Thank you, sir, and that's always my goal. Thank you so much.
Let's make it bigger, Mr. Carrillo. Let's make it bigger, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, we're going to try to help you in that aspect in regards to the media and everything like that. So, and hopefully more Council, hopefully, besides Matia Rosales attending every year, we're going to try to all show up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
I do see you. Yeah, good job, Matias. Councilmember, no, Vice Mayor, questions or concerns?
No, no, Mayor, no comments or questions. Just, you know, we do need, I don't know, with a low number of participants, I think that's my only question. So maybe there's something else that can be done to promote, I guess, the event, to make it a little bit more successful. But I know you'll work on a solution, Mr. Carrillo.
Thank you.
We're going to make a difference. I think we're going to work with Mr. Carrillo. We're going to make a difference. We have to make a difference. It's something that hasn't been offered, so we'll work with you.
No.
Uh huh. Councilmember Matias, Rosales, questions or concerns?
No, as much as I would like to take credit, Mayor, I did not attend the last one for the same reason.
Oh, oh.
Well, no, but again, it's for the same reason. I found out the day before the event, I didn't really see much promotion this last year around. I love going to the event, and unfortunately, I found out, I think it was two days before the event. And I already had some conflicting things that were going on that weekend. But I know it brings a lot of people, the years that I've been here, the first two, three years that it happened. But I think, yeah, we need to work on more promotion and making sure it gets advertised more out there, so more people do come like they have been. I know, I think this past year, they did have a little bit lower attendance, because of the year before, the heat of going outside and inside, and relocating. So it's something that hopefully Mr. Carrillo is able to work out and get a little bit more promotion for next year, and get better attendance, and give this event what it needs to be.
Thank you, Mr. Rosales. We'll do our best.
Councilmember Gloria Torres, any questions or concerns?
Yes, I know the Comic-Con in San Diego is a big, big event, and I know that Mr. Carrillo is trying to, the Comic-Con here in San Luis, get the same participation. And I know that he is doing all for his community to see that we participate in all these events he has. Thank you, Mr. Carrillo, for all you done for the community.
Thank you, Mrs. Torres.
So noted. Thank you. Councilmember Mario Buchanan?
No, Mayor, no further questions. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carrillo.
Thank you.
Councilmember Luna Carrasco, Africa Luna Carrasco, questions or concerns?
No, sir, none.
Councilmember Ponce, questions or concerns?
No, sir. Thank you, Mr. Carrillo.
Thank you, Mr. Ponce.
So as we stand, Tadeo, we're at 5,000.
5,000 for Comic-Con, okay.
Yes.
Next, we have the Gaston Marching Band. And last year, we did not allocate any monies to them, and this year, there were no requests made.
Okay. Let's proceed to our next one.
Okay. Now we have the Hesamani Food Ministry, San Luis Independent Food Bank. Their request, last year, we provided them with $3,000, and their written request is at $3,000. I don't know if you have any input on that?
I actually have a lot of input on this one. One of the... One of the, one of the things, I always make a note, a mental note of the organizations or that actually over this, especially around this time through the COVID-19, it's amazing what the different organizations are doing, but one organization that really caught my attention and they're constantly being exposed, they're constantly trying to help not only San Luis but also they will be helping Somerton, they'll be helping our neighbors across the border and I am very grateful for Pastor Castro and the volunteers, what they do. I do notice that the food drives that they're doing and just this weekend, what they did last weekend was impressive, what the help they assisted us when the volunteer actually donated the beef, the amount of beef, the 2,700 pounds. I know it was not enough, I wish I could say we had more, but it was a donation and Pastor Castro stepped up to the plate and then actually helped us through vegetables and through coffee and it's actually very good coffee, actually, I saw what was giving out and I am very grateful for Pastor Castro's effort and his continuous work, continuous tireless work he does for our community. So at this point in time, I would like to recommend we actually increase the contribution from an extra $1,000 for Inseminar Food Ministry, if at all possible, unless council is against it, but I think, I am very grateful for what they're doing and it's a small gesture, it's just a small gesture for the great, for the big job they do for our community. And so I actually spoke to him and I thanked him personally today because I had to make time, yes, it was very busy, I was very busy throughout the day, but I had to make time because Pastor Castro always makes time for our community and not only our community but others' communities around us, so my, I'm just very grateful, so if there's any objections I would like to add, instead of 3,000, actually make it 4,000 this year. I will, is anyone from the Inseminar Food Ministry here or is Pastor Castro here?
We have Pastor Castro present in the audience.
Okay. Can we have him go up to the mic so I can personally thank him?
I'm here and I just wanted to say thank you, thank you so much for your help and we are pleasure to serve our community. And the last two weeks, we organized big events and now I want to say thank you for the police department, they assist us for control the traffic and for not have any problems and really, we receive a lot of support from the city and we are grateful, thank you.
Pastor Castro, gracias por todo el ayuda que nos ofrece nuestra comunidad. Yo sé que nunca para, siempre está trabajando y lo veo cuando hace social media, cuando acá pues siempre anda haciendo algo y sus grupos, sus voluntarios, un gran corazón y muchísimas gracias por todo lo que hace por nuestra comunidad. Esta vez, o sea, es esa, cuando pasa una crisis como esta, una pandemia, es cuando lo más bonito de San Luis, Arizona sale. Entonces, o sea, gracias pastor, gracias por todo el trabajo que está haciendo y de parte de la ciudad, de parte de mi oficina, le agradecemos todo el trabajo que hace por nuestra comunidad, gracias.
Todo lo hacemos sin esperar nada cambio, así que el apoyo que nos dan es extra y lo recibimos con mucha gratitud.
Gracias pastor, gracias pastor. I'm gonna go ahead and open the floor. Vice Mayor, questions or concerns?
Yes, mayor, I do agree with everything you say, have said. Pastor Castro has always been there for any kind of event, he's there, you know, when the city has events, but I think right now with all this COVID-19 issue, I think, I mean, I'm grateful that you recommended the 1,000, but I wonder if we can increase it to another 1,000, making it 2,000, because this, yes, an increase of 2,000 because this is in our own community, this ministry, this food bank is here, on the ground, helping our residents. So I do seriously think that hopefully council will agree with me that increasing it, this will help his ministry, help our people here.
I concur, good job, thank you. Matias Rosales, questions or concerns?
No, mayor, I agree with the Vice Mayor, I think especially with these times where everything is going on and everything that he's done for the community, I think it's the perfect time to go ahead and do it and I agree with the 2,000 increase and also taking into consideration that, you know, we're gonna be taking back some from like the snack pack program and the gas and marching band, they're not gonna be asking for money this year. I think it's appropriate this year that we spread it out to him and to his organization, so thank you, pastor, for everything you do for the community and keep up the good work.
Very good, very good. Councilmember Gloria Torres, questions or concerns?
Yes, I think, yeah, the Guesamini Ministries need this amount of money and yeah, he has very helpful in their community. Y yo pienso que Pastor Castro hace por su comunidad lo que ningún otro ha hecho. Y sí, muy merecido es que le incrementemos la cantidad. Yo sé, personalmente he mirado cómo batalla él con sus troques, se le descomponen y las llantas, las placas y todo y sé que él merece que le incrementemos la cantidad por lo que hace por nuestra comunidad. Gracias pastor, por lo que hace por todos nosotros, gracias.
Gracias. Thank you, well, words well said, Gloria Torres, thank you. Councilmember Buchanan Jr., any questions or concerns?
Yes, mayor, I have a question to Pastor Castro. Pastor Castro, how many residents do you help in our community?
Amen, gracias. ¿Cuántos residentes ayudan aquí de San Luis, Arizona? Yo creo que tenemos un promedio de, no sé, de 500 personas. El domingo pasado hicimos un drive-through y fue una respuesta increíble y pasaron por el estacionamiento de la iglesia, más de 300 carros. Celebramos el día del niño y dimos despensas a las familias sin pedir un solo centavo de cooperación y la policía es testigo de que la línea de carros le daba la vuelta al parque y luego después del comité de bienestar llegaba hasta la Main Street, entonces hubo una respuesta impresionante y pudimos ayudar a más de 500 familias.
Y dieron carne también.
Sí.
Pastor Castro, tengo entendido que también ayuda a residentes de San Luis, México.
Oh, sí, ahorita, ahorita por las limitaciones que existen por el coronavirus, este, no están pasando las personas que tienen visa, más sin embargo, la respuesta de la comunidad local ha sido también muy fuerte. En realidad no hemos visto muchos cambios de asistencia aunque los que tienen visa no están viniendo, entonces mañana tenemos distribución de alimentos con todas las medidas precautorias que están establecidas por la autoridad, con los servidores con guantes y tapabocas y el público con tapabocas y guardando su distancia y estaremos haciendo distribución el día de mañana y esperamos una gran respuesta. Hemos recibido un troque con más de 40,000 libras de carne que el domingo pasado le dimos a todo el mundo sin límite y aún todavía nos quedó tres cuartos de troque. Hemos mandado más de 500 cajas de carne a Tijuana, otras a Mexicali, a Sonoyta y Operación Hormiga está yendo mucha carne a San Luis, México también. Entonces ahorita todavía para mañana nos quedan como cinco paletas para distribuir carne mañana. Me han hablado de por allá de Manteca, California, para decirnos que viene otro tráiler con otras 40,000 libras de carne, entonces café también me hablaron, ya hemos recibido cuatro tráilers con 40,000 libras de café. Yo creo que ahorita, en este tiempo, San Luis, Arizona no tiene escasez ni de carne ni de café, todo el mundo está tomando café.
Bien hecho.
Muchas gracias señor Pastor Castro, pues le doy las gracias por ayudar a nuestros residentes de San Luis, Arizona.
Amen.
Sé que nuestros tiempos son muy difíciles para algunos y gracias por lo que hace por la comunidad.
Amen.
Gracias, gracias. Councilmember Buchanan, I guess that was your question, yeah, thank you. Thank you, Marius. Councilmember Africa Luna Carrasco, questions or concerns?
No, mayor, nada más agradecer al Pastor Castro por su servicio a la comunidad y que Dios siga bendiciendo su ministerio.
Amen, amen.
Gracias, thank you, Councilmember Carrasco. Councilmember Ponse, questions or concerns?
No, mayor, estoy al 100% de acuerdo con ustedes que desde haberle aprobado los $2,000 arriba de lo que él quería y creo que si pudiéramos, le pudiéramos dar más, se lo merece. No cualquier persona se dedica su tiempo, su vida a nuestra comunidad, que es lo que queremos, que haya gente como él, que nos ayude a nuestra comunidad y se lo agradezco, al Pastor Castro, ya he hablado con él y le reitero mi apoyo a Pastor Castro y que Dios nos siga bendiciendo.
Amen, gracias.
Thank you. So, pastor, parece ser que no más fueron $1,000, parece que van a ser $2,000 más. Oh, okay, bien, bien merecidos y muchísimas gracias por todo lo que hace el pastor, de veras, gracias.
Quedamos en $5,000 entonces, ¿verdad?
Sí, quedamos en $5,000, ajá.
Gracias.
Gracias, pastor.
Thank you, Pastor Castro.
Cuídense mucho, por favor.
Bendiciones, pastor.
Thank you, thank you. Amen. Estoy muy agradecido, discúlpeme.
No, gracias a usted.
No, no, es poquito, es un, es poquito, gracias. So, noted, so thank you councilmembers for making a difference, gracias. What's our next item?
We have the Off-Road Expo, last year we allocated $10,000. The event didn't happen, this year they're requesting an increase of $5,000 for a total of $15,000. I believe we have a representative on the line.
So, my question too is this, okay, so it didn't happen next, last year, so we didn't use those $10,000, now they're requesting an increase from last year, which was, did not happen?
Correct.
Explain to me. Who's the rep, who's, who's?
Lisette. Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Lisette.
Yes, hi, good evening, mayor and councilmembers. Yes, the increase, I just wanna make a note that when we requested the funds and the increase, the COVID-19 situation, the uncertain situation was not in place yet and we didn't know what was going on, so the idea or the reason we requested that additional increase was because we were planning on expanding, of course, on the event, but mainly we were planning on bringing attractions from, additional attractions from out of town and enhancing our marketing for the event, but with given the circumstances and the situation that the request increase we understand is not a priority and we, the committee, understand that, so I just wanted to throw that out there and start with that because the increase at this point is really relevant, so we would just like to request the, or consider it for the same amount that we've been funded in the previous years.
Lisette, when's the tentative date for this event?
The tentative date is October 17th.
Okay, of this year?
Yes, of this year. Consistent upon the situation, of course. I'm sorry, I can't hear the proper, was it the 7th or 17th? The 17th, 1-7. Thank you, Lisette. You're welcome.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and open the mics, the questions, for any questions or concerns. Vice Mayor?
Yes, mayor, I do. I really, really do appreciate all your guys' hard work for this event. It is one of our greatest events that we help you guys, collaborate with you guys. It is amazing, I just love it, so I'm very supportive for what you guys are requesting.
Thank you.
So noted. Councilmember Matias?
Hi, mayor, no questions, hopefully it happens this year, please, we gotta have it back.
Mayor, I agree. Councilmember Gloria Torres, questions or concerns?
Yes, mayor, I know that comité that run this event worked very hard, so they deserve it, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Mario Buchanan Jr.?
Yes, mayor, I don't know if I overheard you mentioning that last year we didn't have one event, but do they get to use that money on something or do they don't collect that money if we don't have an event or how does that work?
No, the money was not given to them because there was no event done, so no, the money was saved.
Okay, just to make sure.
So basically we're using last year's money because that money was never spent.
Oh, okay, I understood, thank you.
Councilmember Luna Carrasco, questions or concerns?
No questions, mayor, just hope the event takes place this year. It's a great event and brings a lot of people to the city, so I'm hopeful that by October 17th, things will be back to normal.
Okay, good, thank you. Councilmember Ponse, questions or concerns?
Well, if the same thing, if it doesn't happen this year, that means, I mean, we're not gonna spend the money, am I right?
You are correct, councilmember.
Okay, if this the case, I mean, yeah, I agree, I mean, hopefully, I mean, I mean, we'll have it, but I mean, I'm still concerned about the COVID-19, you know, trying to use the money wisely, like I said before, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ponse, I just wanna make sure that the safety of our community is the priority at this point in time. The expo has, the expo has been a success for the city of San Luis, I was really, I was not happy when it didn't happen last year and so, but things does happen, they do happen, so it was out of our control, so since the city does not run that event, we had no control over it, but I sure hope October, it looks good for everyone, I sure hope that the COVID situation is well balanced and controlled by then, we're hoping, but things might change. So I have no problem supporting the expo for $10,000, I do have a problem supporting it for $15,000. I think the committee needs to demonstrate that it is strong, as strong as before, before we started increasing any amount, so I think $10,000 at this point in time is, and if the event does not occur, that money will not be spent. So it's, I know it's hard, it's hard to say, it's hard to predict, especially with the COVID situation, our 4th of July, we are making changes to our 4th of July, which is the highest, which is the biggest event where most of our nonprofit get the funding, so let's see what happens and the Expo Committee, it's where the city of San Luis is looking at this event and we really wanna support it, but it needs to be consistent, so for whatever, for whatever reason, but this could be the, I mean, in my opinion, I really wanna support it, but it needs to be consistent, let me reemphasize that, so thank you. Go ahead.
See, yeah, yeah, I just wanted to mention something, last year the reason we didn't do the event is because it was a transition year for us, we rebrand the logo, we rebrand the whole event, plus we lost two of our community members. Our committee is composed of five volunteers and including myself and on top of that, we have about approximately 25 to 30 volunteers that worked a day of the event, but it's just this whole event, we're the second largest event in the community and it's put together by five individuals that are family members, we work, we do all sorts of stuff, we have family and we try to set some time aside to put, to work on this event because we love our community and we want to give back to our community. And this event, our main goal is, as you know, we always try to give back to the community and doing so, what we do is we provide scholarships to our high school students and that's our main goal, so that's why we decided last year to pretty much not take a break but restructure everything and rebrand, rebrand the event and that's what we did and that's where we are right now and I think we're set and we're strong, we just need to continue with the local support at the city and other organizations and local businesses that, as they've done in the previous years and we're thankful for that.
Thank you, Lisette, thank you, and as long as you're, as long as you're doing these scholarships, which is our main, that's the main priority of the city of San Luis, we will continue supporting, as long as you support our kids, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so I guess the consensus was it's a $10,000 for the Off-Road Expo?
$10,000.
Thank you.
Now we're gonna go with the San Luis Fin Festival?
Yes, last year we gave them $5,000 and this year they're requesting the same amount and... And Mr. Carrillo is still on the line, or?
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm still here.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Okay, I'm gonna open the floor for comments at this point in time. Mr. Carrillo, thank you for considering us and actually doing the great work. So it's something we can do, I mean, it's amazing. It's something that, gracias por todo lo que hace, de veras, and I really like the shirts. I really like the shirts.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, Council, Vice Mayor, questions or concerns?
None, mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Matías Rosales?
None, mayor.
Councilwoman Gloria Torres?
Sí, mayor, este es un evento que yo nunca me lo pierdo. Siempre disfruto mucho de todos los eventos, principalmente este evento que hace Tony. Y este, y pues adelante, Tony.
Muchas gracias, Gloria.
Thank you, thank you, Gloria. Councilman Barry Buchanan, questions or concerns?
Yes, mayor, I want to mention that I heard a lot of good comments about the film festival from a lot of people around, and I just wanted to throw that out there, you know, to Mr. Antonio Carrillo, that we're trying to support, you know, things, I mean, events that our community like or need in this community. Just to throw it out there, Mr. Carrillo, okay, nothing against you, nothing personal.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Buchanan. We really strive for the best for San Luis. We're having some conversations with Mr. Louis Galaví, and we're, we're coming up with really innovative ideas for this year, to get your support.
Thank you, Councilmember Buchanan. Councilmember Afrika Luna Carrasco, questions or concerns?
No questions, mayor, just to make a comment that I attended last year's film festival, and I saw firsthand the hard work and dedication Mr. Carrillo puts to this event. So thank you, Carrillo, for, and keep, keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mrs. Carrasco.
Thank you. Councilmember Jose Ponce?
I just want to make a comment, mayor, that it was an honor for me to attend this event last year. I mean, I tell you, they were wonderful. And I'd like to thank Mr. Carrillo for a great job, and I, I, le quiero reiterar mi apoyo, y adelante, Mr. Carrillo, muy buen trabajo, gracias.
Thank you, Mr. Ponce, and thank you for attending last year, it was a pleasure to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Ponce. So as stated, Mr. Carrillo, great job, and continue doing the great work you do. And these, this is different. I mean, I mean, we have the sports, we were constantly supporting sport, but we also need to support the arts. And, and, and when you bring El Cinema Mexicano, and what's going on right now is just amazing. So, and so hopefully, hopefully, I won't be as busy next time, when, so I can actually go more than one day. So when I do go, I really enjoy it, gracias, Mr. Carrillo, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So at this point in time, San Luis Film Festival at five thousand.
Okay.
Okay, good deal. Let's see here, what's our next one?
We have the Arizona Interagency Farm Workers Coalition. However, last year when board member Rosa Varela and President Fernando Quiroz approached me about this, we provided them with twenty-five hundred dollars, so there's that typo there. And this year they're requesting the same amount.
Well, I'd like to say something about the Arizona Integrity Farm Workers Coalition. It's a, it's a, it's a growing group. It's a group that has stepped up to the plate. Just recently, in the, in our DES office, the only DES op in, open, and they're processing over eleven thousand individuals. They stepped up to the plate, they found the masks. I mean, masks are hard to find, and they're expensive. And Fernando Quiroz and his group were able to, to, to actually get the coalition going and actually get support from the different entities throughout the city. And this is the type of organization that actually make a big difference. They don't just say things, they actually do things. And it's just amazing how, how they took action. And the thing is, it doesn't matter if it's San Luis, it doesn't matter if it's Yuma, what they do, the scholars just provide the services they provide our students, it's just amazing. And the thing is, if there's an organization that looks after our field workers, tiene mucho corazón, is this coalition. And so fifteen hundred is, es demasiado poquito. I believe last year we helped them with twenty-five hundred, and that's the amount they're requesting?
Correct, twenty-five hundred dollars. And we have Mr. Quiroz on the line.
Okay, before, before we proceed, I would like to just add five hundred dollars more. Actually, we can do three thousand instead of the twenty-five hundred, we can go three thousand. Because all that comes back to our, to our children, to the scholarships they give. And let me tell you something, the scholarships that were given in the past, for example, through the different organizations, they, I've seen, they've become professionals. They've become lawyers, they've become actually physical therapists, they've become nurses, and some of them are going to medical school. So these are our children, and a little bit of help, aunque sea poquito, a little scholarship does always help, and I really appreciate the hard work, so, if at all possible. Okay, Ferny, are you on the line?
Yes, council and mayor, thank you for the kind words. I appreciate everything you said about the Arizona Interagency Farm Worker Coalition. Just a note, last year, our top student that we awarded over twenty-two thousand dollars in scholarships, four of those students were from San Luis, so very proud of that. And this year, we will be awarding four additional San Luis high school students. So your support is greatly appreciated, and it's very impactful, like you said. Seguindo, tembrando la semilla de nuestra juventud is what we believe in, so thank you.
Gracias, Ferny, thank you for the hard work and everything you do for our community. And there's one thing, he doesn't, no miras, si es de Yuma, si es de San Luis, si es de welcome to the San Luis. When there's a need, Fernando Quiroz and his organization are always there, in the forefront. They're not, they're not afraid to be in the forefront, and gracias, hermano, I really appreciate what you do. I will not, I will not open the floor. Vice Mayor?
Yes, mayor, thank you. Thank you, Ferny, for everything your organization does for our students, and the, and thank you for that report of twenty-two thousand dollars in total being awarded to students, so thank you.
Councilwoman Matías, questions or concerns?
No, no question, I agree with you guys on that as well.
Councilwoman Maria, Gloria Torres, questions or concerns?
Y mayor, muchas gracias, Ferny, por toda la labor que haces con los campesinos. Muy agradecido que ese trabajo que están haciendo tú y todos tus grupos, gracias.
Gracias, Gloria. Councilwoman Mario Buchanan Jr.? Mario? Mario still on?
He's muted.
I will come back to you, Mario, okay. Councilmember Afrika Luna Carrasco?
No, sir, no questions. Thank you, Ferny, for thinking of our San Luis kids. Thank you.
Councilmember Jose Ponce? ¿Qué pasó con Ponce?
Needs to unmute.
Mr. Ponce, you're muted.
It's frozen.
It's frozen. Councilmember Ponce? Councilman Buchanan? I guess they're having some technical difficulties. Councilman Ponce, are you there? Okay, so the consensus?
Hello?
Yes, Councilman Ponce?
Oh. Yes?
Council, yes, questions or concerns?
Uh, 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 no, I'm, I'm having, no, sir, reception.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
See, I can hear you.
Okay.
Councilman Buchanan, questions or concerns? I guess we, okay. Well, as it stands, we're looking at twenty-five hundred plus five hundred, so it's a total of three thousand.
Okay, and just as a, as a note, all these agencies that we provide civic contributions to, they sign an agreement every year, and they need to provide a report that they, the money comes back to San Luis residents, and they do. So it's just, because there was a comment made about that, so. Just wanted to reiterate that the agreements are made with, or memorandums of understanding with these agencies that money or scholarships or events will be to support San Luis, Arizona residents. And I have the Arizona Interagency Farm Workers Coalition at three thousand.
Good. Very good. I believe Mario's having some technical difficulties, if I can get IT there for us, okay?
They're on it.
Okay, good, good job. Ferny, pues yes, I was, Ferny, you have a little bit more to help us a lot more, so gracias. Thank you for everything you do, please thank your, your coalition. It really, when you talk about making a difference, it's making a difference, thank you.
Muchas gracias, tiene todo corazón, thank you so much.
Gracias, thank you. Okay, the next one, Yuma Regional Medical Center Cancer Center.
We have, we have, this is a new agency, the Yuma Regional Medical Center Cancer Center for the Hispanic Support Group. This is a new request, they're requesting five thousand dollars, and it is my understanding that Ms. María Esparsa, who is the CHW on Hispanic Support Group Coordinator, is on the line in case they have any questions.
Before, before I ask María to speak, I just want to say that when I heard that they lost their funding, direct funding, it's, it's, I was at, I was at the pageant, I was, I've been at the events where they do the, the funding, the fundraisers, and I've never seen a group of ladies with so much life, so much desire, so much wanting to do things and, and show everyone that they're survivors, and there's a reason why they're survivors. It really struck a chord when, when I, when I heard they lost their funding. And it's something that, and a lot of the members are from here, from the San Luis, Arizona area. And so anything we can help, anything we can do to improve the quality of life of our residents, especially those residents that have gone through so much. If you've never had cancer before, if you've never gone through that, to that experience, these people have, and they're survivors, and some of them are going through the process. Cancer strikes everyone, it doesn't matter who you are, when you are, how old you are. These brave women have gone through a lot, and, and I think, I think we help so many, so many organizations, but I think this is one of them that the city, the city has to help, in my opinion. So I really, it's, it's a necessity, we can't ignore it, cancer's not gonna go away yet. There's gonna be, there's different cures that are occurring every year. And so, but I, I just feel that it's something that the city has, it's minimal, the amount we can do, we can help, or, or, and make a big impact. And these, and these ladies, trust me, they, they make an impact. And when they sell the flautas and the carnitas, I mean, they, they really know. And tiene mucho corazón. And, and I wish I had their, their energy sometimes. Pero, I was very grateful for what María Esparsa does, what the organization does, and the pageant is beautiful. It was the first time I went, and it was, it was beautiful, and the whole families were there, so. Congratulations, María, congratulations to your group, and hopefully, if council permits, we're gonna be able to help you. So María Esparsa, please, a comment, por favor.
Gracias, alcalde, por sus palabras tan, tan sentidas. Solamente quisiera tener la oportunidad de decirles que ese trabajo desde el año pasado por el crecimiento tan grande que has tenido este grupo, ya no pude seguir haciéndolo yo sola, que era así como se llevaba este grupo. Y hay una coordinadora que a la par que trabaja mucho y también ha entregado todo su corazón a este proyecto, y es Maritza Escobar. Y sí me gustaría nada más que supieran que este trabajo yo ya no puedo hacerlo, hacerlo sola. Así que somos dos coordinadoras y las dos trabajamos a la par. Y el esfuerzo pues ahora sí que es conjunto, y nada más me gustaría decirles que este esfuerzo que hacemos, quienes estamos al frente del grupo, rebasan nuestras horas de trabajo. Estamos veinticuatro, siete abiertas para los pacientes, para los miembros del grupo, porque la necesidad de este grupo de apoyo no es nada más en cada reunión. Sus necesidades son día con día, y van desde el apoyo emocional hasta el hecho de que en este momento se han quedado muchos de ellos sin trabajo. Así que hay que buscar los recursos en la comunidad para que la carga de pasar por esta enfermedad tan fuerte pues sea menos difícil, y puedan ellos enfocarse en lo que debería ser realmente importante, que es su salud, sobrellevar la enfermedad.
Gracias, María, de veras gracias por el esfuerzo y el trabajo que hacen, o sea, se ve, se ve que tiene el corazón, y es algo que, que de verdad lo demuestra, y nosotros queríamos ser parte de esto, y yo sé que con el apoyo del Consilio lo vamos a poner, y podemos, nosotros más queremos poner ese granito que les ayude a ustedes, y si les podemos ayudar en ese aspecto, de veras gracias.
Muchísimas gracias, alcalde, y muchísimas gracias al resto de los miembros del Consilio por poner en consideración nuestra petición de apoyo.
Gracias, María. I will not open the floor, Vice Mayor?
Yes, mayor, gracias María y Maritza por sus esfuerzos en hacer estos eventos, estos eventos. La primera vez que atendí, fui, me dio el honor de poder donar un pastel para los, las sobrevivientes de cáncer. Así, gracias por la invitación, y también fui el año pasado, que la alcalde estuvo allí. Pero una cosa que sí quisiera comentarte es que si pueden hacer unos eventos aquí en San Luis, todos los eventos se están haciendo en Yuma, so, si pueden considerar haciendo un evento, aquí tenemos, verdad...
A culture center, culture center is a beautiful pageant.
El culture center se puede usar, es que ya San Luis está creciendo, los, los pacientes, las pacientes, se me hace importante que deben de tener algo aquí en San Luis. So, por favor, considera eso, recomendación que estoy haciendo, y sí estamos listos para apoyarte, María.
Muchísimas gracias, regidora María Ramos. Sí, claro que sí, con mucho gusto aceptamos la invitación, y podemos planear algo, cualquier cosa que ustedes quieran que nosotros llevemos hacia allá será un gusto. Déjenme nada más comentarles que consideramos que más del veinte por ciento de las personas que atienden a este grupo de apoyo de manera fiel, digamos, alrededor del veinte por ciento vienen de la ciudad de San Luis, Arizona.
Yeah, bueno.
Y claro que sí, cualquier cosa que ustedes quieran que hagamos allá con muchísimo gusto.
Gracias, María. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Matías Rosales?
Nothing, mayor, I think this is great, you know, this is close to my heart and to our family as well, so I wish we could do more, but this is something very needed for our community, and thank you, María, for everything you and your group do for us, thank you.
Gracias, concejal.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gloria Torres, questions or concerns?
Sí, mayor, nada más darle las gracias a María por todo el esfuerzo y el trabajo que está haciendo con este grupo. Yo personalmente he estado con ella en los eventos que ha tenido, y sé que, por ejemplo, los eventos que tenía planeado para hacer aquí en San Luis ya ha ido pospuestos por este, este virus que tenemos. Pero sé que ella hace un esfuerzo muy grande por ayudarlos, y pues cuenten con mi apoyo para este, este dinero que es para ella.
Gracias, Councilmember Torres, thank you. Councilmember Buchanan, questions or concerns?
No, mayor, no questions. Thank you, María, for helping our community too.
Gracias. Gracias.
Councilmember Afrika Luna Carrasco, questions or concerns?
No, mayor, just thank María for everything she does for the cancer patients, and I think Vice Mayor's suggestion is excellent, so if María can bring more stuff to the city of San Luis, that'd be awesome.
Perfect. Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Luna Carrasco. Councilmember José Ponce?
Well, I'll just make a comment, I'd like to make a comment. Gracias, María, por todo su empeño, su trabajo que ha hecho para nuestra comunidad, I wish I mean we could do more for you, uh, uh, eventos, so gracias, and I'm still waiting for my tickets, okay? Thank you.
Claro que sí, gracias.
Okay.
Councilmember Ponce, thank you so much, it's so noted, let's get your tickets, okay?
So, so according to the consensus, María, parece ser que ya tienes una fuente, y espero que les ayude, espero, espero que haga una diferencia, y yo no quiero que se decepcionen como estaban cuando perdieron sus fondos, no se trata de eso, te escuché, y escuché el grupo, y de verdad, es algo que la ciudad, o sea, es algo que ustedes nos ayudan a nosotros, y nosotros tratamos de ayudar, entonces, muchísimas gracias por todos los servicios que hacen, no nomás aquí en San Luis, sino en el condado, cuentan mucho, o sea, y den el apoyo de la ciudad, y muchísimas gracias, María.
Muchas gracias a ustedes, en verdad tuvimos días muy tristes cuando recibimos esta noticia, pero nunca pensamos en ningún momento nuestra opción fue dejar el grupo, y estamos realmente emocionadas por esto, muchísimas gracias.
Gracias, María. So, as the state consensus was, to support the Yuma Regional Cancer Center, the Hispanic Support Group, okay?
Sí, lo tengo 5,000 dólares, y quisiera darle también, aprovechar de las gracias a María, bien saben todos ustedes que este es un tema que me toca un poco el corazón, ya que mi mamá es sobreviviente del cáncer, así es que todas esas actividades son muy buenas, así que gracias, María.
Muchísimas gracias a ustedes por ser tan generosos.
Thank you so much, it's so noted, so gracias, okay, so I guess I just dues and subscriptions, that's all we have?
That and our capital projects, so for dues and subscriptions, we have the Arizona-Mexico Commission at 1,500 dollars, that's the copper sponsorship, that's the one we have always been doing, the next level up is silver at 3,500, and so on, so.
Okay, thank you. Let's see here, no, there's no change on that one. I mean, we have to be part of the Arizona-Mexico Commission, it's something that we have to do, and it's something that I think we can make a difference. Okay, so I will now open the floor to Councilmember Vice Mayor.
Yes, mayor, the Arizona-Mexico Commission is just a must, it's something that we, we can't even think of removing, just, so that's, that's good for me right there.
Thank you, Councilmember Mathias Rosales.
I am good.
Councilmember Gloria Torres?
No, mayor, no comment.
Councilmember Buchanan?
No, mayor, I'm good.
Councilmember Afrika Luna Carrasco?
Mayor, is this just for the Arizona-Mexico Commission, or for any of the dues and subscriptions?
No, that is just for the Arizona-Mexico Commission.
That's probably true.
Oh, no question.
Thank you. Councilmember Ponce?
No question, mayor.
Thank you. We, thanks to the Arizona-Mexico Commission, let me just reemphasize that, last year, the Arizona-Mexico Commission was focused, was, the focus was Port of entry one. For the first time in history, San Luis was put as the priority, not only locally, but also in the state with the Arizona-Mexico Commission, so it is something that, and also the city was recognized, and we were given the award for the hard work that the city of San Luis has been doing, so it's something that we need to be part of, and so, it was not only the support from the state, but also from the state, from Sonora, so it's making a difference, and thank you, council, for allowing us to participate, and good job, council, de veras, without your support, this would not be happening, so. I guess the consensus, yes, Ponce, everything, no comments or concerns, Ponce?
No, sir.
Thank you so much, so, did I miss anyone? No, really? No, okay, good, let's see here, so, Tadeo?
We, thank you, we have the Voter Trade Alliance, BTA, at 10,000 dollars, that amount is the same amount for this year, and they changed their fee structure, 10,000 dollars gets us a seat on the board, right now, we have Mr. Ralph Bellis, who is still on the line, representing us, I don't know if we have any questions about it that he might be able to answer?
Okay, Ralph, I know you represent us, I know they changed the whole, the structure, and it gets expensive to be part of BTA, before we had, I believe we had three members, but it gets really expensive, but BTA has been, and will continue becoming a very influential group in regards to federal government and policy, I know there's members from Texas, from California, and over, when we were at the mayor's meeting in San Diego, I was able to actually meet some of the members of the BTA, and thank you, Ralph, for introducing me to them, and it's amazing, the hard work, and what happens in these meetings are very influential, and they really make a big difference, so Ralph, gracias, and thank you for being a member, if anyone, if there's someone that people know is you, Ralph, and I thank you for being a part of the city and representing us, and especially something so important as a BTA, one thing that I did notice when I was in San Diego, everyone was saying hi to you, Ralph, so I kind of felt kind of awkward, pero, the estrella era Ralph, so good job, Ralph, appreciate that.
That's every conference.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you. So I'm gonna go ahead and open for discussion of questions, Council, Vice Mayor?
No, mayor, we know this is an important part, so, thank you, Ralph.
You're welcome, thank you. Okay, thank you, Councilmember Mathias?
Nothing, mayor, continue forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Gloria Torres?
No comment.
Thank you, Councilmember Buchanan, questions or concerns?
No, mayor, no comments, thank you.
Councilmember Afrika Luna Carrasco, questions or concerns?
No, sir, thank you, Ralph, for representing.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Ponce, questions or concerns? Councilmember Ponce? We lost Councilmember Ponce. Okay, the consensus, based on, it's a go, so if Ralph, you want to continue being a rep, please, we insist, and we're not letting you go, Ralph. Thank you, mayor, council, thank you very much. Thank you, gracias, thank you for everything you do. I guess, what's next?
We are to the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, last year, we provided them 21,821 dollars, this year, there's a slight increase of 564 dollars due to the per capita amount based on the 2018 estimate, so the new, the new amount due will be 22,385 dollars.
Being part of Arizona League of Cities and Towns, it's very important for us to participate, that's how we get a lot of information, we also get legal advice from them, and so, it's something that we have been participating, we're part of, and so, that's a no-brainer, in my opinion. So I will now open the floor, Vice Mayor?
Yes, mayor, I do agree with you, this is something that is very needed for the city, so, yes, I agree with that amount.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Mathias Rosales, questions or concerns?
None, mayor.
Okay, good. Councilmember Torres, questions or concerns?
No, no comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Buchanan, questions or concerns?
No, mayor, no, no comments, thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Ponce?
No, mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Afrika Luna Carrasco, I skipped you, sorry about that, questions or concerns?
No, sir, none.
Thank you so much, so as it stands, the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, 21, I guess it's 22,385, Tadeo?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. What's our next one?
We have Naleo, and that's the membership for 100 dollars for each council member.
Very good, I know that Naleo is crucial to, they provide some training, they provide speakers, and I hear the comments from Councilmember Afrika Carrasco and Councilmember Ponce, and I really, it's something that I think it's important, so I think it's a worthwhile investment, and so I suggest we continue supporting it. So, it's 400 plus 300?
Yes, we usually pay the 700, I don't know, I think we've always had a typo there, but it's always been 700 dollars, because we pay 100 dollars each, every year.
Let's make sure we clear that, okay, 'cause, yeah, I remember it being 700, so, okay, good. So, I'm gonna go ahead and open the floor for questions, Councilmember Vice Mayor, regarding Naleo?
None, mayor.
Councilmember Rosales?
None, mayor.
Councilmember Torres?
No, mayor.
Councilmember Buchanan?
No, mayor.
Councilmember Afrika Luna Carrasco?
No, sir, none.
Councilmember Ponce, questions or concerns? Councilmember Ponce? Okay, I guess they're still working on that one, so the consensus is to continue with the dues to Naleo, a total of 700 dollars.
Thank you. Next, we have the National League of Cities and Towns, last year, we, our dues were 200 dollars, this year, based on population, per capita, it has slightly increased to be a total of 849 dollars.
Oh, that's Yuma County Chamber? So you increased 600 dollars?
No, that's the National League of Cities and Towns.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah, you're right, you're right.
That's a total, it was 200 dollars, now due to per capita, it will go up to 849 dollars.
Okay. I have no opposition to that. Any questions or concerns, Vice Mayor?
None, mayor.
Questions or concerns, Mathias?
None, mayor.
Questions or concerns, Ms. Torres?
No, mayor.
Questions or concerns, Buchanan?
No, mayor.
Questions or concerns, Afrika Luna Carrasco?
No, sir.
Questions or concerns, Ponce?
No, sir.
Thank you, if not, that is the consensus, we're gonna proceed, okay, Tadeo?
All right, next, we have the Yuma County Chamber, our yearly dues are 600 dollars, this year is, will be 660 dollars, and also, we sponsored the Governor Duce's State of the State address this year for 400 dollars.
Very good, that's something we have to be part of, perfect. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open the floor. Questions or concerns, Council, Vice Mayor?
None, mayor.
Concerns, questions or concerns, Mathias?
None, mayor.
Questions or concerns, Gloria Torres?
No, mayor.
Questions or concerns, Buchanan?
No, mayor.
Questions or concerns, Afrika Luna Carrasco?
No, mayor.
Questions or concerns, Ponce?
No, sir.
Thank you, so it's, so it's that stated.
All righty, next, we have the Chamber of Commerce, last year, we didn't get a request, whichever, in a precautionary method, we, if I'm not mistaken, you requested us to put a 1,500 dollars just in case we got a request from the San Luis Chamber of Commerce, which hasn't been existent in a while, the building that they used to be in is officially vacated, so I guess the recommended amount will be 0 dollars on this.
Well, let's, I suggest, well, with the COVID situation, we're gonna need a lot of support, and maybe, maybe put that money aside, if it doesn't get used, it doesn't get used, but I think we should put at least 1,500 dollars aside for the chamber, if for whatever reason, the Hispanic one, or someone actually gets, actually, does occur for the city, we need to be ready, that's my thought, so, so I'm gonna leave it open to see what comments from council. Vice Mayor, any comments or concerns regarding that?
Well, if it doesn't get used, you know, it should be okay.
Okay, good. Councilmember Masdiah Rosales?
Good read, mayor.
Good, good. Councilmember Gloria Torres?
No, mayor, no comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Buchanan?
No, no, no questions, thank you.
Councilmember Afrika Luna Carrasco?
No, sir, no questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Ponce?
No, sir.
Thank you, so, Tadeo, so noted?
Okay, we leave the 1,500 dollars there, the next one should, I don't know why, is there, I think it's, it's just our regular newspaper subscription to the Yuma Sun, online access, so that can go on the, on the regular, Monica Miguel, I cannot see your faces, but that can go on our regular dues and subscription budget for council rather than this list, please, so that's it for this list.
Okay, the capital improvement projects, I really need more time to look at it, I don't know about you guys, but I would rather have another special meeting and actually go over the capital improvements, I think capital improvements requires more time, because if we do it right now, we're probably gonna rush to it, and I really think we should make sure that everyone has a written one, and make sure, unless, unless council wants to talk about it, because I really wanna look into the capital improvements, especially with the whole situation with the budget, and also, if, I believe the March numbers are out for tax revenues, do we have that information yet?
Not yet.
Okay, I believe Julie Angles had it, I don't know why we don't have it, so, this is my concern regarding the capital improvements, I think council should actually look at it and make sure, and we can probably have a special meeting, or actually have, because we're gonna be here, I can tell you right now, so unless council wants to continue, I would rather continue this item to a special meeting and actually go through the CPI, capital improvements project, but I'm gonna go ahead and open the floor to council, see what they say. Council, Vice Mayor?
I agree with you, mayor.
Councilmember Rosales?
I agree, mayor, best to give it its attention that it needs and review it and be fresh when we go over, which is three hours into a webinar already.
Yeah, I know. Councilmember Torres, suggestions, concerns?
Yes, mayor, I was going to suggest that we can, we need more time.
Yes, I agree, I was reading every word, so, trust me, good, good, good. Councilmember Buchanan?
Yes, mayor, let's continue, please.
Councilmember Afrika Luna Carrasco?
Yes, sir, continue, another meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Ponce?
Yes, I agree with you, mayor.
Yeah, I know, but we have homework, guys, it's capital improvements, it's what we're gonna do next year, we need to be careful, we need to look at our budget, but I think we can actually make a difference, simple projects like what's happening right now, obviously, it's making a difference, so I think we need to continue this momentum, but yet, hopefully, we'll get some numbers, and if it all possible, Tadeo, when is the deadline for this?
The, I have Monica in front of me, and I was just about to ask her that, the, Wednesday, we have a regular council.